I'd like to call the Bluff City Board of Mayor and Alderman Special Call Meeting to Order Monday, March the 2nd, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Sharon Rokoff.
Alderwoman Key.
Here.
Alderman Rawls.
Here.
Vashmire Harrington.
Here.
Alderman Ward.
Here.
Alderman Bowlin.
Here.
Okay, we'll have a prayer by Alderman, Richard Bowlin, and immediately follow and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Now, dear Lord, we thank you so much for the days you've given to us to enjoy. And, Lord, we thank you so much with all the blessings you give to us. Oh, we thank you for the citizens that's here today that is thinking about the city and worrying about it and just letting us get it done finished. So, anyway, Lord, we thank you again for everything you do for us, be with us this board tonight as the decisions we make makes it in your honor. Please thank we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The next thing is the citizens' comments, the first session. Come to the podium, give your name, address, and phone number.
Carolyn Payne, 4818 Love City Highway. How's everybody tonight?
Fine.
Good. Before you all vote tonight and make this final, I would urge each of you to vote your conscience in your heart tonight. Look around you at how few residents show up for these meetings. And you want to take away the amount of time that they can speak. That is not, that is not right. As a matter of fact, the very few that are down here, when that meeting started that night, it was yet more time, not less time. I ask each of you, look in your heart. You represent the citizens. And if any of you vote no, good for you. If you vote yes, you're not going to Bluff City in any service.
Do we have anyone else to make like a lot of comment, a comment in this session? If not, then we'll move down to discussion, action on public hearing on ordinance number 2020-001. Mr. Frye.
An ordinance amending Bluff City Municipal Code, Section 1, 102, dealing with the order of business of the Board of Mayor and Alderman Meetings. What this does is change a citizen comment portion from one five-minute section at the beginning of the meeting and strikes the city recorder being the timekeeper.
Does anybody have a comment in the public section, public hearing?
It has been mine to say that when the timer goes off, it's somewhere in the 20:30, and I'm reading.
Yeah.
I think that Sharon is going to keep the timer off. So, if you can just change something that was already supposed to be doing, goes back to my point. I think you want me to vote no to not, a misordinance.
May I request to be recognized?
Yes.
I sponsored this ordinance, and I'll further explain the reason I feel this way. Number one, it aligns us with larger bodies. No community, nobody that I can find, and I looked today after a conversation, has two sections of citizens' comments. Hell, they have one. We lengthened that by two minutes in, according to my recommendation thus far. It hasn't went to final passage yet. Lastly, the driving point of this is to use the folks that are sitting up here to work for you. You shouldn't be required to come in and stand here and do a dissertation once a month when you can reach out to any of us and speak your mind. We can ask the mayor to add things to the agenda, and you actually get more time, in my opinion, to voice your views. I stay with this motion that I made, and I will vote yes on this motion.
Well, I certainly have not. And in response to that, the board members up there, why do citizens have comments? It's our concerns, because what you all do up there is not always a reflection of our concerns. And that is a lot of mine of it. And as far as being a private charter, that's exactly why we can make up our own rooms as we go along. We don't have to be like everybody else. I'm sorry, that does not wash at all.
Okay.
Can I, can I say something? You know, I'm with Jeff on the five minutes up front, because when you come to a meeting, you get the five minutes before we vote on anything to influence us to make us change our mind. The three minutes afterwards, the decisions are made. There's no, why, why would you have to get up after the decision is made for three minutes?
And the comments made afterward is very important, because citizens may have some comments on what your decisions were. If I'm not playing god there.
But, George.
Excuse me, Mayor, may I speak?
Yes.
I totally agree with you, Ms. Payne. And also, let's be real, citizens do reach out to board members. I reached out and nobody would answer the phone.
I did. I called everybody up there except Eric Ward, and because his phone number listed is not correct.
Exactly.
And nobody, nobody returned my phone call except for Jeff.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have a comment?
Are you finished? Carolyn was still speaking. She got interrupted.
And I do not agree with Alderman Rawls about that, because this is the citizens' time to be able to stand up and speak up and speak out. I mean, we can sit up here and make decisions, well, y'all can sit up here and make decisions, but we need to, we're serving the people. We need to give the people the opportunity to stand and speak.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have a comment? If not, we'll close the public hearing and have a second, second reading on motion, second read on public, second read on amended Bluff City Municipal Code.
We had to take a vote on it.
Okay.
See, you all get such, you sat there, you don't even know what you're doing.
Or else we didn't have you running your mouth all the time, we would.
Well, run my mouth, I'd like you running your mouth.
Thank you, that's enough.
Okay.
Mayor, I make a motion that we move forward with this change.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Take a vote, please.
Alderwoman Key.
No.
Alderman Rawls.
Yes.
Vashmire Harrington.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Bowlin.
No.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda.
Let's electioneer, Richard.
What'd you say?
Hold on.
The next thing on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance number 2020-002. Mr. Frye.
An ordinance amending Title 8 of Bluff City Municipal Code dealing with alcoholic beverages. Well, what this ordinance does is allow for on-premises pure permits.
We'll open the public hearing. Does anyone have any comments on this ordinance?
May I request to be recognized?
Yes.
I have full support of this ordinance, as, as the Wells and Jordy Board. It's not about the consumption of alcohol, it's about the business opportunities that the town could see. Thank you.
Does anyone else have a comment? If not, we have a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion, and we adopt this ordinance.
I'll second that motion.
Take a vote, please, Jeff.
Alderwoman Key.
Upstaying.
Alderman Rawls.
Yes.
Vashmire Harrington.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Bowlin.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, good. We're down to discussion and action on Bluff City Middle School property. Anyone having comments to come to the podium?
Is this three minutes?
No, I think you have.
Oh, okay, all right.
This is something.
I'm Bestie Carrier. I live at 380 Cedar Street, and my phone number is 423-538-7531. And I have grown up and lived in Bluff City most of my life, and I treasure the memories and I treasure being able to live in this town. Anytime a school is taken from a community, we lose part of ourselves. And I know that progress goes on, and sometimes it's necessary. But then, when I've looked at the schools that have been closed in other communities, it has not, they have not had an exit plan.
Right.
And it has been not savory to look at and whatever. So, a year and a half ago, I started on this journey to see that Bluff City did not fall into the hands of negligence. And so, I went to the school board, I called the commissioners, and something wonderful has happened. And, and I'm asking you all, Herschel Glover will present, we have a project for this projected use of the facilities. And I am so pleased, and I think that, that you will be too. It is a wonderful proposition, and I can see that it will give Bluff City a shot in the arm, and it will bring in people, it will help children, and I am so excited about this. And I'm asking you, after you hear it, to help us and help the young man that is wanting to buy the properties, and help him in every way you can. And so, Herschel Glover will give you all some, some information. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carrier.
Can you do that, ma'am?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
The young man that put this proposal together, his name is Chris Luzer, and he owns a business in the Piney Flats Industrial Park. He does computer work. I don't know if many of you folks are familiar with him. If you go to the tag office and buy your tags, he does the computer programming, it prints out your tag, it's got your yearly sticker on it for your, for your vehicle. He does it all across the state of Tennessee. And Chris is probably one of the smartest young men that I've met, and he's also a veteran, and he loves children and he loves the community. And I talked to Chris about, I probably about four or five weeks ago about this, and talked to him about some of the proposals and things that, that Miss Carrier and other folks in the community were talking about, and he's very interested in the building. But the first thing that, if it works out, the county attorney for us and the school board attorney, I think, are talking now and negotiating back and forwards, and we're going to get with the mayor here in a week or so and sit down and see what we can get ironed out as far as the progress on moving the school forward and, and see where we're at as far as the folks that's got deeds, that's invested in it, or, or, you know, just get some problems worked out that's, that's arose with it. The first thing that we talked to, to Chris, and I know all of you are familiar with the rock building that's kind of around in behind the middle school. Years ago, when I went there, it was a shop, and it was also a band room. Chris's proposal to Miss Carrier, if this goes through, is to donate the rock building to a nonprofit organization that will be run by Miss Carrier, Mr. Helbert, and other folks in the community. And his commitment to that is, is to remodeling the building, bring it to a state in which the nonprofit can give tours, have it ready for, for folks to walk in right off the bat and be, be visible for everyone, work with the State Historical Commission to help provide certifications and funding for further improvements and maintenance. And what that would do, the history that Bluff City has got, I mean, it's just hidden. And we want folks, when they come in this area, to visit Bluff City, come downtown Bluff City, and see what we've got to offer. And if this happens with this, with this building, we'll have people going in, touching, feeling, visualizing what Bluff City has been about over the years. And, and I don't know anybody else in, in this area that's got more historic things of interest in Miss Carrier and other folks in this community. I think you'll see a lot of folks come forward to have stuff on display in this building. And Chris is, he has made a commitment to us, when you read this, you know, even create a website, social media, create additional parking if required. I think it's going to be a real good deal for Bluff City, and like I said, for the history surrounding this area. The more people you get to come into this town, the more money they're going to spend here, and I think that's what we're after. And we're also going to apply, it'll be a 501(c), where people can donate to it, nonprofit. I think that'll help it move forward a lot, too, when, when people in this community and other areas kind of see what we're, we're doing with that building. And like I said, Bluff City is full of history, and, and that's one way you can get some folks to, to come in and actually see and visualize what's going on in Bluff City. The second thing he wants to do is help Bluff City with the Bluff City War Memorial. And I talked to Mr. Rawls there before the meeting, and, and I think he said that he had some money donated from you guys, or, or along the way, but his commitment is to work along Bluff City administration, board of mayor and Alderman, and community members, and complete a comprehensive list for veterans to, to move forward with the park. And what his proposal was is, without y'all's objection, if this goes through, is to maybe put the War Memorial Park at the middle school where the flagpole is, where you'd have more room, where it'd be more visualized and have more people come into the downtown area. He said he would even help maintain, keep it safe, access to the public. I want to talk to him about this, and he said, I would love to do that for the veterans. He said that's, and like I said, he, when you meet this young man, he apologized for, he couldn't be here tonight, he's in Sacramento, California right now, but he really wanted to be here. And if you'll turn to the next page, what he's got planned for the school is a community center. He wants to create a community center in, in the cafeteria grounds, an auditorium to allow for families, businesses, communities, teams to hold and invite fundraisers and award ceremonies. He's going to create a website for that to promote folks to come in and, and lease that or rent it for, for that type of banquet situations. He wants to turn the cafeteria into a banquet hall for businesses and community leaders, birthday parties, retirements, weddings, receptions, all kinds of sports awards and so forth. The young man's very, very smart, and he's, he's got, as you can see, this is his plan. He also wants to work with young, young athletes in this area, Fellowship of Christian Athletes. He's been involved in that for years. He's a, he's very religious as far as helping children in, in the community. I think that would be a great outreach to the, to the folks in this area also. If you look on the last, of course, we'll get to that point in a minute, but there's a, there's a young Perry fellow in, in Chincapins involved with him on this. We'll get to his name there just in a minute. But to continue on Fellowship of Christian Athletes, the, the use of the building is to have a physical location where coaches and athletes can grow in their faith and develop their craft. Training center, home office for Kingsport-Sullivan County Fellowship of Christian Athletes. That means that he'll be moving those facilities into that, into that school. He's going to have camps, one-day training clinics for the kids, he's going to combine athletes with, with, with folks from the NFL, kind of like you see that goes on in Elizabethan when Jason Whitten comes in, he's going to work with folks like that. Turn to the next page. He's involved with Good Samaritan Ministries, and they have, they have come along and going to work with him to locate in this building also, I presume, from what, what I understand. And the reason he wants to move forward with that is to give back to the community. When we turn to the next page, we'll see what his plan is for that. It says, "For the plan for Bluff City use, Good Samaritan Ministries proposes to use a presented facility in Bluff City, Tennessee, for the purpose of combining property and changing lives through social services, food pantry, special programs, and for those who live in the Bluff City area and the Southern County surrounding area. These services include emergency assistance for rent, food, utilities, social work case management." He's even going to have some people there from the Veterans Administration. If we've got some veterans that have problems, that want to come in and have some counseling or talk about what's going on with their lives, that's going to be available also. So, it's, I'm telling you, it's just a win situation for the county. And even in the, the wintertime, he's going to have emergency assistance for rent, food, utilities, social work case management, a daily food pantry distribution, summer food program for the children, a Thanksgiving, Christmas food program for low-income families, and back-to-school programs for the children in need when they start back to school. Of course, on the next page, you'll see the statistics from Good Samaritan Ministries, individual ser, social services, food pantry. That's, that's kind of some of the things that they've done over time in the communities that they're present in now. The Children's Incorporated, Children's Incorporated Bluff City would be a summer program for kids in Bluff City, Tennessee, and surrounding areas, provide an exciting educational environment, which will teach these young children life skills, healthy living, academic support, and that will be provided by the Girls Incorporated of Bristol. And when you read down below that, that's the director of outreach for those folks in Bristol. And that is a very nice and professional response to Chris from that organization to, to more or less say that we're by your side to help you. And when you go on to the next page, Vessels of Honor Ministries, that kind of gives a, an outlay of what he's got planned for maybe moving the offices from Johnson City also into that building. So, see, we're going to utilize the whole building. It's just not going to be the cafeteria, it's not going to be the gymnasium, and it's not going to be just a football field, it'll be the whole school. Probably do some more office spaces in there for his business and probably some of the other ones. And there's your contact information for nonprofits, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, that's Mr. Brad Perry that I talked about a minute ago. He's area director for Kingsport-Sullivan County. There's his email address and his, his contact information. There's Good Samaritans' contact information, and Children's Incorporated, Vessels of Honor Ministries. If you look on the last page, you'll see what it says, "The Junior Patriot Program for Athletes." And what this is, it's, it's a nonprofit set up for the Patriot Pride, for the young folks that's getting ready to move into East High School to play sports. Junior Patriots Football. Had 70-plus children in 2019, ages from four to 13, playing football. We use the football field, locker room, offices, and equipment rooms. Junior Patriots Cheerleading. This is the program for the young kids that's moving up to, to the middle school age to be cheerleaders and, and on to the, to the high school level. Also, the basketball. This will be a new addition to the, to the Patriot community, because now they'll have a gym that they can actually participate in, play ball, have teams to come in and, and have games. So, that's kind of the proposal that, that Chris has got, and we've, we've been in contact with each other for, I've known Chris for a long time, and he's, he's very committed to making this happen. And we'd love to have Bluff City's support on this, because it's going to take a community effort to make this work. And I hope next month that he can be here to talk to you folks, to see if there's any questions that you might have for him. I have spoke to the mayor of the county about this, he's in support of it. There's just a few things that we need to work out to, to get the school signed over to, to Chris and his organization.
I can just see one thing that I'm disappointed in.
Okay.
And I was hoping that we would be able to have some space in that school, because we've run out of space here. We have run out of space here at the city, and I was hoping.
What type of, what was you looking forward to put in this space particularly?
Well, you know, we don't have hardly any space in the police department, and then we have run out of space here as for storage. And then, we, we could use some extra space for different things involving for the police department and then for the area here at the city.
I think what I'd focus on entirely would be getting revenue back into Bluff City. I think that would be your main concern. If, if you get revenue back into Bluff City and get folks coming here, I mean, I'm not speaking for him, under any circumstances, you might be able to talk to him after this as established and see for some way you could work out something with him. I mean, that's a big building, there's a lot of.
That VOTEC building up around top in between everything, or is that?
Lot, lot of space there provided. So, that would be something, I'm, I'm sure if it's available, he would be willing to, 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 to speak with you about it. But I think this proposal, if, if this could happen.
Well, it sounds good.
If this could happen, we would be very, very beneficial for Bluff City and the taxpayers, really for the whole surrounding area. He even talked about putting signs up out at the end of the bridge for people to, you know, direct them into this area and some of the other things that, that he's proposed. I think the War Memorial is what really got me, because I just mentioned it to him. I asked Jeff there before the, the meeting. He would, he's got folks that will come in and, and help with that. But I told him that we want, we want the Bluff City people that's on the Board of Mayor and Alderman involved in the decision of, of the way it would look and so forth, and he said he was fine with that. So, it gives you something to, to look at, and like I said, I'd like to have your support on it.
Definitely. Now, the school board ultimately has the final say, or are they still?
Well, that's what we're discussing now.
That's why, because you've mentioned.
And I'd like to give you, I'd like to give you my opinion on that. That building was paid for with taxpayer money.
Exactly.
That building was kept up with taxpayer money. The maintenance, the, the painting, the mowing, all of it was kept up with taxpayer money. And therefore, I think it should go back to the taxpayers of this area. That's what it's all about. And with this plan, the folks in this area, you know what you're getting. There's no question. If somebody else comes along, who knows? You could get a, you could get a flea market in there. You could get, you could get something in there that's, that's going to harm the neighborhood or, and, and even getting it rezoned, you know, some of them said that getting it rezoned would put a stop to that, but, you know, I don't, I don't really say that it would.
Right.
But with this package, you know what you're getting, you know what Bluff City's getting, and I think it would be a, a very good step forward for the folks in Bluff City. You're getting the, hopefully, November the 3rd, Liquor by the Drink will be passed. That will give the taxpayers a, a little break on their property taxes. And plus, if that happens, you have a nice place there, if you, you know. He even said in front of the rock building to fix a, an area, you know, if you want to have a glass of wine or folks to come in, like I said, to just visualize and touch and feel what Bluff City's had over the years. I think it would be a, a very good investment for, for you guys.
I think it's an excellent plan.
So, I appreciate y'all giving me the time and, and getting to speak to you about this. Instead of coming back up when the county commission's available, I'd, if you want to, I'd just like to give you a couple of things now, or you want me to wait till then?
I have one more question.
Okay.
If you go to my building.
That's what we're in negotiations, no, she, excuse me, negotiations about now, is, is how we're going to move forward with the building. The property taxes on that building would probably be outstanding. I don't, I'd be afraid to put a price tag on it right now, but I'd say the property taxes on that building's going to be extremely high. I don't think there's any way that, that you could build a building like that now, as sound as it is, and, and the way it's built. I hope that, I hope we can get it worked out to where we can get it. He is willing to purchase the building, he told me that. But when I talked to him about it, I said, if we can work it out to where we can actually help you with that building, is see some things that you can do to give back to the community, and he said yes. And that's why those things are in here. He, he don't want anything for nothing, he wants to give back to the community, and he wants to help the, the folks of Bluff City. So, that's, that's some things that we're looking at now. Even if it is, like I said, I can't speak for the whole commission, but if, if we have to, we'll go back and, and see if we can do a resolution or what we have to do to, to recognize that building for him or, or for the procedure of him getting it. We'll just, we'll just have to see what the county attorneys and the school board attorney say. But as far as my understanding is, that was, that deal was worked out about seven or eight years ago, but there was no resolution done on it, and there was no, no signed paperwork on it. So, in my opinion, the county should still own that building and decide what happens to it. That's my opinion. That's my opinion. The county attorney could come back and say, you know, he's got different thoughts, but I think we're going to have some very expensive buildings that's going to be sold in the next little bit. You're going to have Colonial Heights Middle School, you're going to have Central Heights over there at the end of 11W. There's several of them, and that's what I told them. You know, these buildings, that's a lot of money that could be put back into county general fund. But with this package, you know what you're getting, and you know what to look forward to as far as what his plan is. But there's a lot of good, exciting things going on in the county right now, so I'll talk, let me get done.
Okay, thank you.
In case, I couldn't understand all the questions, but Mr. Lazer, the gentleman that would like to purchase it, you know, he is going to be paying for all the renovation and said that he would even hire young people for jobs to paint and whatever. So it's totally not going to ask the city for money. I just, I think he's wanting you to go along with this and help him with his endeavor.
There's not going to be any expense at all to the city residents.
So what he's going is giving back?
Yes, yes.
That's great.
Yes, he's not going to be asking for any money from the city, not for any help from the city. He's going to be providing the help and the money.
They want to help our city to grow.
And help your city to grow, yes, ma'am.
Herschel, from a business standpoint, you say he's going to appear before us pretty soon. But I have several business-related questions about this.
Yes, yes. Like I said, he's...
All his investment, if he becomes insolvent?
He wants to do a total nonprofit. This facility will be 100% nonprofit.
That's great.
Nonprofit completely. There've been some folks approaching, wanting to go in with him and do some other things with it, and then he told them, "No, I don't want to go down that road." He said, "I want it to be 100% nonprofit." And that's even what Ms. Carrier's and their situation with the historic rock building would be, too. It would be 100% nonprofit.
And he's going to help with the War Memorial also?
Yes.
That would be great. I've been working on it for 30 years.
Yes, that's, I'll give him your contact information. When he comes and speaks to you, you'll see exactly where I'm coming from.
That'd be great.
And the decision will be up to you folks where you want to put it. He mentioned putting it up at the middle school around where the flagpole is. That way, you'd have good access to it, all the folks that's visiting that area. That would give them another reason to go into the museum or visit the school.
Sounds good.
That's great.
You guys...
I appreciate that, but I still have some business-related...
That'd be great. I'll sure tell him. And thank y'all for the time.
Thank you.
And when the county commission comes up, we'll talk to you some more.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to put the picture of the memorial, the War Memorial, is that in your package?
No.
No.
His idea of difference. You can put that. Oh, okay. All right. This is, this is what he proposed, perhaps, if everybody would like that.
Okay.
Oh, gosh, that's great.
I'll take that.
Can't answer anything better than that.
Oh, that's nice.
Very nice.
Because anything with the Bluff City Middle School property up there, if Bluff City been presented with it...
And that approach? Not necessarily what you all have.
So, yeah, if I understand this correctly, Bluff City's desire for that facility up there would be...
If you want to be recognized, you need to come to the podium.
You didn't tell us, did you? Well, I just...
It is, it's a historical, and it's very old, and at least it's still a school. It's still a part of our history up there, and it certainly has more desirable uses than to be used for a storage facility. If Bluff City is in need for a storage facility, how about buying a house? And doing that, at one time, you discussed putting a storage building over here.
We still have things on the...
Well, I mean, that is been months ago.
Yes.
With the War Memorial, and as long as that is dragged on for way over five years, and that would be inclusive in it. This sounds like a dream, a food pantry. I mean, Bluff City could use that, help with, I know, Carol, you've mentioned it several times, help with the water bill, sewer bill. He would be willing, electric bills. This sounds like a dream. It sounds like it was gifted right into our lap. And Jeff, what questions would you have as far as a business proposal?
Well, I'm in business, and I don't care if to share with the group. It sounds wonderful. I mean, it really, really does. The only thing that I'm concerned about is the soliency of this business. How's it going to be profitable to the business owner for the long term?
Well, nonprofit.
Is it a true 501(c) treaty? I guess my questions are more business legal, just for the long-term agreement.
Well, I believe I'm quite capable of understanding.
I think you was wanting to talk directly to the...
Yeah, and that's what I intended to do. But I am super impressed by the offer I was...
That's it.
We might have you here next month.
The scope on that just seemed like it didn't even end, so this sounds like it would be wonderful.
All of your plans.
That's wonderful. It sounds really good, and I think, I think the whole board is really excited about it.
Well, possibly you all could think about buying a house for storage. There's got to be a few around here.
Let us finish with this, and does anyone else have a comment?
Are you dismissing me as I stand here?
No, I'm just saying, you know, we have a special call meeting, and we're doing this specifically for what's on the agenda, so...
What are you coming up here for, then? This is on the agenda. You just want to dismiss me. That's fine.
Excuse me, mayor.
Yes.
I would just like to thank Mr. Glover and Ms. Kyer for this, the opportunity that you are presenting to us.
Yes, we are.
And I just want to say thank you so very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
And I stand with you guys. It's great.
Yeah. I think all of us up here are excited about it. And it's going to be wonderful, help our city grow and do a lot of things for the young people and people that need help. And so it's wonderful, and we really appreciate you. Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments on that? Mr. Five, do we have? No, we don't have to vote on it. The attorney said no. Okay. Okay, then, if we don't have any other comments, can I have a motion to adjourn?
You got the license and the citizen's comment.
Oh, yeah. Send the citizen's comment. Just come to the podium and give your name, address, and phone number.
Carol Payne, 4818 Bluff City Highway. Couple of questions here. Since December 23rd, how many times or how many days has the water plant been down? Does anybody know if it's down? How much water...
If you want that information, you can send it to us.
No, this is my comment, this is my time, and this is my questions. How much water has Bluff City bought from Bristol since January 23rd?
If I, if you want that information, I can get the information, and it'll be corrected. It'll be correct. I don't want to sit here and say something and it not be correct.
Okay, that would be fine. A low-ball figure even?
No, I'm not going to answer that question because I would want it to be correct.
Okay. Do we have a new water plant operator? Did they have two licenses?
We have someone that's working with us, and then we also have Alan that's taking his test in May.
How many times has Alan taken the test?
Only once, thank you.
Okay. Did he pass?
He barely missed it.
Barely? What's the passing score?
Okay, let me tell you, this meeting is not about...
This is my time.
It is not about...
This is my time.
And like I said, you can fill out a paper and request the information you want, and we'll give it to you.
As badly as I was treated the last time by you, filling out a request form, that is not going to happen. When you called the police on me to have me escorted out of the building over there, not going to happen. When you stuck your finger in my face...
That's not true, but I'm not going to argue with you.
It is true, and they know it other day.
Where's our police officer?
Oh, you are not, you're going to have me escorted out here?
I can, and I will.
I will not look good on you, then.
I'm not worried about how things look. We're going to handle business like it's supposed to be handled.
And I'll get that one.
Okay, does anybody else have a comment? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll take it.
Take a vote, please, Sharon.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Ward?
Yes.
Austin O'Hara?
Yes.
Alderman Ward?
Yes.
Alderman Allen?
Is it all a show for your camera?